Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, January 23rd, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. We've been in executive session since 6:15 this evening. Do I have a motion to bring us back to public session?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jane Shepherdson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This is wonderful to have so many people here and have a lot of our kindergarteners, I think just kindergarten?
No.
And second grade?
Second and third.
Second and third, okay.
Always overestimating.
So, we like to welcome everyone this evening. We have a short president's report. The first thing I'd like to say is, you know, we're in the middle of budget season right now and you hear a lot going on. Governor Cuomo presented his state of the address and while he didn't mention a lot about the educational component in the budget, a couple of things were concerned and he said that they're going to propose a $956 million increase, 3.6%, but he's not really talking where that's coming from, some from foundation aid. The concern is that he's proposing adoption of state mandated building level aid distribution mechanisms. So, as a board and as Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, I know Vicki could talk about this, we're concerned that we need to have our own autonomy on how we spend our money within our district and how we decide as a board and as a community what makes sense. So, I know Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, New York State School Board Association are looking at that very closely. I received a letter from Frank Schnecker, who's the Bosse's Board President, this is more for the Board, that Bosse's now has some programs that they're working with for anxiety, bullying, and how we can interfere with learning, that those are available to our districts. What else do we have here? Westchester-Putnam School Board Association has a legislative meeting with Senator Pete Harkam to meet with us, his constituents, on February 7th at 11:00 a.m. and the place will be announced in the future. And the last thing I want to say, which I think is great, I'd like to congratulate the boys' swim team and Meg Kaplan. Meg was honored with being the New York State Swim Coach of the Year. So, our boys have had another wonderful season. They've, their consistent winning and their attitude, I guess we just heard they've done 50 consecutive wins. So, that's not just this year, this is many years in the coming. And they're just a great example of athletes and members of our school community. So, we'd like to thank them and Meg Kaplan on such a great award. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew, Mr. Corsilia.
So, good evening. Let me just raise this up a little bit. Dr. Ackerman, members of the Board, Andrew Corsilia, Principal of Forest Greeley High School. I'm really excited to be here because I would like to publicly honor three of our students for their work and their efforts and their achievements in science research. So, if I could call up here and have them stand up here so I can embarrass them a little bit. Sharag Kumar, could you come on up? Aditi Singh, come on up, Aditi Singh. And Anna Zhang, come on up. So, all three of these seniors here have been named Fellows in the Regeneron Science Talent Search semifinalists. This is an incredibly prestigious award. I think it's the oldest and most prestigious science talent search and award for seniors of high school. It used to be called Intel and before that it was...
Westinghouse.
Westinghouse. And so, it's been around since 1942. And so, there were 300 students earlier this month selected as Fellows out of about 2,000 applicants and all three here were named Fellows. It's, you know, alumni of the STS, they've made extraordinary contributions to science and they hold more than 100 of the world's most coveted science and math honors, including the Nobel Prize and the National Medal of Science. I can't, you know, I can't understate how incredible this honor is, how proud we are of you. So, each of you, right, who were selected from about 2,000 entrants, received $2,000 and the school also received $2,000 for science enrichment. So, I want to say thank you for that. That's really fantastic for Forest Greeley High School. We appreciate it. And it's part of this three-year program in science research that starts sophomore year. And your teachers who have been heavily involved are incredibly proud of you that couldn't be here tonight, but I know Sue Moore, Mary Rose Joseph, and Trudy Gessler and Department Chair Pat Donovan have been working hard on this program for many, many years and they're incredibly proud of you. I'm proud of your achievement, their work with you, the entire school, and to remember that this began a long time ago when you were younger than some of the students who are here with us now. And I want to thank all the teachers who have worked and dedicated themselves to your education, as well as your parents, who we can't forget have had a huge impact on you. So, this, while it's your achievement, there's also a lot of people in the group behind you. I want to recognize all those people and congratulate you, your families, and everybody who's had a hand in your education to bring you to this point. So, I would like to congratulate you. So, I was talking to Sharag earlier and I said, would you guys come to this meeting? We want to publicly honor you. And he said, well, Mr. Corsilia, you know this is actually the day that they also announced the finalists, not just the scholars. That's the, you know, the finalists are selected from the 300 scholars. Forty of the finalists are selected. And so, of these 40 finalists, they all go down to Washington DC. They're invited there to undergo the final judging. Sounds kind of scary, but it sounds really exciting. And they display their work to the public, they meet with notable scientists. And I said, okay, okay, we're going to do this anyway, it's going to be great, but I have to say we have some extra good news today. So, we have two students who are now finalists, right? This is Sharag and Aditi are going to be going to Washington DC as one of the four, two of the 40 finalists. So, I was hoping, since I can't do justice to your work, that each of you would come and tell the boards, just for like a minute, give them a brief kind of synopsis. I'm sure you've been well-practiced, you could do this for a long period of time, but give them a little bit of an idea of the kind of work you're doing, the topics that you've been researching, and where you are with that. Does that sound great? Okay, thanks.
And if you could do one more thing for us, if you could please, after you're done, explain your research, turn to Roaring Brook students and talk about why science is such a great subject to study, okay, in one sentence.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Board and members. So, I'm really concerned about climate change. So, basically, my research is saying, how can we better predict climate change? And according to NASA, sea surface temperature, that's just the temperature at the top of the surface of the ocean, that's the single most important indicator of climate change. But to get accurate SST measurements, you have to use satellites, which are often 600 miles above the surface of the ocean. So, naturally, that's going to introduce some errors into your SST estimates. So, I worked on estimating those errors and brought the error down from 0.82 degrees to 0.38, so sort of halving it. And this international group called GRIST, the Group for High Resolution Sea Surface Temperature, says that if someone can hit an error of less than 0.4 degrees Celsius, that'd be a significant improvement to climate change modeling. So, 0.38 is less than 0.4, so that's the first ever achievement of that accuracy. So, that was super exciting.
Great.
Hi, everyone. So, I think that's exciting because it's sort of helping understand the world. I hear so much cool stuff out there. It's your way to, like, the insurance seeker, understand all about the world and to use it to help people. Okay? Keep on doing what you do.
Hi, I'm Aditi. My research was on visual short-term memory, more specifically trying to understand the structure and limitations of short-term memory. So, I did this through creating a computational model to try and understand that visual short-term memory is an intrinsically limited resource, but it can be further restricted by the brain's rational decision to minimize neural effort. And neural effort comes in when we expend the effort to try and remember a certain number of items.
So, I guess what I like best about science is it's for, it's an adventure of the mind and you can do so many cool stuff with it and that's why I sort of like it.
My name is Anna Zhang. My research focused on creating a solution to address the issue of texting and driving, which is an issue really prevalent amongst my age group, amongst teens. And so, I addressed this issue through artificial intelligence, which is a pretty hot topic right now. And so, I used a smart camera and created a set of algorithms that could allow it to detect when drivers were using their phones. And hopefully, in the future, we could trigger other processes that would shut down the phone that was related to the driver. So, that could ensure other safety and protective measures in the future.
I guess the reason why I'm interested in science in particular is because you really get to explore any sort of topic that you're interested in and find a solution to any problem. And that's really exciting to be able to innovate every day and create something new.
So, I'm lost for words. You guys are so incredibly impressive. I'm sort of in awe of you and I keep reminding why I have the absolute best job in the world. It's so much fun. So, I know, Warren, you have some certificates there.
I do, we have some certificates. Thank you so much for coming and explaining to us what you're doing and congratulations on your awards and good luck in the future. Best of luck with college.
Before we take our pictures, I would just like to say, as your superintendent, how extraordinarily proud we are that you're representing Chappaqua in this way to the rest of the science community throughout our country. And I think your projects are amazing, but even more so is how you described your love of science for our youngest students here, who hopefully will be in your shoes one day up here at a Board of Education meeting. So, with that said, we'd like to take some pictures.
Is it true they're going to name the satellite? They're going to name something after you?
So, if you guys can come on over here with Warren and the rest of the board and we'll take your pictures for the website.
Let me turn the rest of the meeting, or at least the next portion, to our superintendent, Dr. Ackerman.
And I would like to turn it over immediately to Roaring Brook. So, would our beloved Principal of Roaring Brook Elementary School please introduce our guest speakers tonight?
No question, yes. I want to begin by thanking the Board and the administration, as well as all of the family for being here tonight. This is a very exciting night for our second and third graders. Tonight, what you will hear is the ways that our students have been inspired and ignited by the resources that have been provided by this district, about how they have gone into the makerspace in the Global Learning Center and use technology, as well as ideas like design thinking and project-based learning, to be able to expand their understanding of the world around them. We have Ms. Susan Diskin with her second graders, who will be followed by Ms. Skiris and Ms. Lester with their third graders. And because they are the ones you are here to hear, I'm going to pass the mic to Ms. Diskin.
I would like to introduce our second grade engineers. We have Kami.
Hi.
Ellie.
Hi.
Harrison.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Alex.
Hi.
Brady.
Hi.
And Liv.
Hello.
These are the future engineers of our world. I just would like to thank Dr. Ackerman and the Board of Education for inviting us to be here. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. O'Leary and Ms. James for all your incredible support and encouragement. And thank you to all the parents that are here. So, what we're going to do this evening is just share a little project that we have been working on. And our hope is that at the end of this evening, you will have a solid understanding what project-based learning looks like in second grade and how children can use the design process. Kami, take it away.
The project we are going to share with you this evening is called Simple Machines. We are going to explain how our class called the design process to build a simple machine that could lift a mini pumpkin. Mrs. Diskin read us a story, The Biggest Pumpkin Ever. It's a fiction story about some mice that are trying to move a pumpkin. They try many ways until they finally figured out a way that would work. We talked about the creative, how creative the mice were and how they worked together to move the pumpkin to the festival. Our, one of our classmates, you asked us, asked us, how would a person lift a pumpkin? That's when Mrs. Diskin presented us with the challenge to build a tool or machine that could lift a pumpkin. We used the steps in the design process to build a machine that could lift a pumpkin. The first step in the design process is to think about the challenge and how we might build a simple machine that could lift a mini pumpkin. Think involves sharing our building ideas with our class and getting feedback. We also sketched and gathered materials. Then we made. With our materials, we got busy building. After we made, we reflected about what we each made and gave more feedback.
Next, we met in the GLC with Ms. Item. We got to sit on high tables with stools. Ms. Item taught us about the decision process, the design process. Then she shared videos and books with us that showed some simple machines, wheels, levers, and pulley systems. We used our personal laptops to research machines.
We went on a pulley hunt to find pulleys at our school. First, we found one on our fly pole. Ms. Gina showed us how the pulley raises and lowers our fly. We found pulleys in the shades in our classroom, too.
Coach Willard and Coach Lopp showed us how the pulley system in the gym helped lower the ropes, rings, and basketball hoops. Ms. Diskin also brought in pulleys for us to play with. After our pulley hunt, we got busy and started to sketch and label our designs. When we finished one sketch, we sketched another. We labeled our sketches so we would know what materials we needed for, needed to gather for our pulley.
Using the connecting message, we started our mini prototype. We learned how to make a cylinder, a flange, L rocket, and a Band-Aid and a cord. Here's a video of me and some of the techniques I made. I want to see which might be strong enough to hold a pumpkin.
So, here I am just building different tubes to see which one I should put on my pumpkin lifting thing. And I'm not really thinking about putting the beautiful hoops on it because it's just not the strongest one, but these three are very strong, I can tell.
The video you are about to see is of me explaining how my mini prototype works. I was very happy with how my, I made my prototype.
I made a prototype of a pumpkin and this is how I made it. So, I used straw and string to lift up the pumpkin and the paper, the basket. And I used two paper towels, basically just paper, to make this stay up. And I used tape to stay up and that's basically it.
The video you will see next is, is me explaining my mini prototype in art. This is the prototype of my mini pumpkin. And there's going to be a basket with the pumpkin in this side and when you pull it, it's going to go up on the other side.
We tapped Mrs. Elwood, Mrs. Item, and Ms. Wendell during this process because they are experts on many things. So, they worked on the prototypes with Mrs. Elwood.
The next video you will see is me explaining my prototype. You will notice that I used the word lever. This is my simple machine idea. So, this is like the base of what I'm going to attach to make a lever. And I'm thinking about how the string is going to go up and down. So, I've probably made a mini version so I can see how it would work.
Some of the materials we used were paper and toilet paper rolls, tape, string yarn, cardboard dowels, paper, paper clips, pipe cleaners, containers, straws, and plastic cups.
The next videos will show us building in the makerspace.
Whoa.
I don't know. I'm going to go out because... Make the double fridgerman.
In this video, you will see me tweaking my simple machine. Here's a picture of our final designs. We had a lot of fun designing our machines and we learned a lot. Some of our friends will show them their machines.
So, these are some of our simple machines. If we have time, some of the children can demonstrate it afterwards.
We used our laptops and CISO with Ms. Wendell. We shared our final design and we reflected on the experience. Here's a video of Max interviewing us. Hello, my name is Brady. What was the task presented to you? We made a pulley machine.
Explain how your simple machine works.
So, I put the pumpkin on here and then I lift this up and then, and then it goes up like a, like a pumpkin.
What was the most challenged part of your design to try and put the string and these things on? What did you enjoy about, about the design work you completed?
Making the pumpkin, I'm proud of myself that I did it because I thought I would never do it.
We reflected on the process and the whole experience. Design challenges are fun and we learned about machines and matter. We successfully designed and built machines that could lift a pumpkin. Researching with our laptops helped us learn about simple machines. It was nice to have choice in our designs and map material. We learned that it's okay if our first, second, or even third designs don't work. We developed a growth mindset. We have perseverance and we don't give up. We are engineers.
Top seven reasons we love our new GLC space. Seven, it's fun to work in other places other than our classroom. Six, the GLC has lots of different spaces to work with partners or alone.
We can use books even if we aren't in library class. We have computers, printers, and large monitors.
We feel grown up when we get to decide where we want to work.
It's cool to have new technologies such as Beep, Bat, Dot, and Dash in our own laptops.
This is the number one reason why we love our new GLC space. We are grateful to work together with our teachers.
That was fantastic. Mrs. Diskin, is this a good time for the Board to ask our engineers some questions?
Absolutely.
And then maybe after, we usually take a little break after our student presentations have concluded, then we can maybe see some demonstrations as we're breaking, so.
Sure, that sounds wonderful. Are you up for some questions?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Wow, thank you, guys. This was so amazing and it's always great to have students come here and talk to us about what you're learning. And it helps us a lot to make decisions for the school district. So, what I wanted to ask you is, is there anything you learned from your project that you think that you can apply to other areas, whether in school or in your life? And I don't mean if you can raise a pumpkin somewhere else, but what I really mean is, if you can use the way you learned to be successful here, you know, the methods you used. So, I'm not sure whether you read books or you got ideas from each other or just practiced doing different things and maybe making mistakes sometimes, but are all of those ways that you used to accomplish this, do you think will help you in other projects or other areas of your life?
Some, like for some things, yeah.
Can you give an example? Can you give an example of, this was the first PBL we did, can you give an example of other PBLs we did since then that you used some of the techniques, the strategies that you used for the simple machine?
So, when we were building this, I learned that to have a better growth mindset and I used that in the swing and yeah.
They had to make swings. We've been learning a lot about matter and they had to decide what type of materials they could use that would make a swing that could hold a bear. So, that's what you're talking about, the swing that you used, you had a growth mindset in that? Alex?
And we also made a bridge that can hold 21 bears and we made a snowman.
Highest snowman.
Like stretch snowman.
Yeah, like build snowman out of paper.
I used the flange for my swing and I also used it for my pulley.
So, what I hear you sharing, all of you in some way, is that some of the techniques that you used in this project, you used in other projects that you're doing in class. And you learned that when something wasn't working, you didn't give up, you used a growth mindset where you would keep working on it until you could figure out a solution, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have another question? Thank you, guys. You did such a wonderful job, thank you. I'm curious if it motivated you to, not only now that you're building this, has it given you, has it motivated you to fix anything in your house? Like if something you like breaks? Or something like if you have a toy that breaks or helping out, has it, has it given you any ideas like, gee, I can, I can fix this or I can come up with a better way to address this? Anything at home, does it, does it get you excited to do anything like that?
No.
No, not at all. What were you going to say? I see your hand up in the back.
I think I know something, how to fix it like at home.
Go ahead, share that.
So, like if there's a broken string on a picture frame, I could use some tape, a nail, a hammer, and some string to fix it.
So, you'll find materials at home to do that for yourself? That's great. Excellent. Do we have one more question before we welcome our next group? All right, so I heard some of you say you used pulleys and some of you say you used levers. Did anybody use something other than one of those?
Uh, no.
No.
And did you, did you think one of them worked better?
Yeah.
You did? Which one?
The pulley. Yeah.
Does everybody agree?
Yes.
You want to talk about why? Does someone want to explain why? Go ahead.
Well, the lever actually is a bit harder to make, but the pulley, you just have to attach it to a dowel or you could just, or you could just pull the string and it will go up easier than a lever because levers are a bit harder to make and no one really found out how to do that.
Great. That was some amazing feedback.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your work with us. But I have one quick question. You know, when we talk about STEAM and learning like this, what do you like best? Did you like the engineering part best? Do you like the artistic part or the design part? The way, everything is a little different, but what...
I like the design part.
The design part?
The design part.
Design part.
Design.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I like the making part.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for sharing with us.
Thank you. So, we'll transition to our next group. Thank you. That was amazing. So let's invite our next group of students up and we'll transition. If you guys can take your seats in the audience. Okay, we're, we're... Okay, so I'd now like to bring our attention back to our presentation station. And we will welcome our third grade. So let me turn it over to our faculty, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Ackerman, thank you, board, thanks for having us. And thank you, Mrs. O'Leary and Mrs. James for your evergoing support. So I am Jenny Garrus and this is Caitlin Lester. We're third grade teachers and we've invited eight students here tonight to talk to you about an ongoing project that we are sort of in the middle of that we're just having a really great time with this year. So we've titled our presentation Around the World because in third grade, we learn all about the world. We learn about the world geography and culture and there's a lot of content embedded in it. And Caitlin and I, um, this year decided that we wanted to dig really deep and use our social studies curriculum as an opportunity to really expand the students' experiences with STEAM and also with literacy opportunities. So, gosh, it's really hard to see from here. But, um, through the work that we're doing, through the project that the kids are gonna tell you about tonight, we are on, on an almost daily basis, um, building our literacy skills. We're learning about science, technology, research skills. Um, the kids have been using math and art. And all of this goes along with the social studies that they're learning. And so I don't wanna talk too much about it. We're gonna turn it over to you. Or first, we're gonna turn it over to Caitlin and then we're gonna turn it over to you guys to talk about the great things that you're doing this year.
And so all of that comes together to get us to our end goal which is to create a student-led travel agency. And students are creating multimedia presentations and projects that will entice people to visit certain places in the specific continents that they're studying. They can say it better than us. So they're going to tell you about the process they've started so far and what our next steps are.
It all started with Tinker Tuesday. Tinker Tuesday is the one day a week that Ms. Lester and Ms. Garrus's class get together to tinker. Ms. Moskowitz, Ms. Elwood, and Ms. item also helped us. We used Ozobots, Dash, and Dot and learned to code those robots on our iPads. We learned how to use technology, how to problem solve, and how to work together. I love Tinker Tuesday because I got to work together with friends from another class. We learned a lot and had fun together.
Uh, learning the basics of world geography, map skills, and culture. We started by learning basic world geography. For example, we learned about the seven continents, the oceans. We started this on our map workbooks. By exploring maps and watching videos, my favorite, was a video called Tour the World. It names every country in the world and includes some pictures and cool music. In my class, we really loved exploring the giant globe.
We learned how to read a map by using the compass and key. We looked at different kinds of maps, like weather and landmarks. My class learned about maps through social studies. Maps are cool. Next, we learned about culture. One way we did this was by having a visit from a man named Mr. Mike. He told us stories about his travel around the world and showed us artifacts from countries in almost every continent. I liked this because I could actually touch the things he brought. For example, he brought a spear from Africa that was made by a tribal leader. He showed us the right way to touch it without hurting ourselves. It was so cool.
We develop, we were asking questions with uneasy answers. For instance, if I ask, um, what's the biggest continent? That's an easy question. Strong questions are like questions that you don't know it right away. This is all inquiry-based questions. We formed into groups based on interest, what we wanted to learn about. Later on, we chose subtopics of what we really wanted to learn about our country. Climate, people, animals, and plants were included in this. Without the, all this, I wouldn't know the capital, I mean, the tallest peak of South America was. So here are some examples. As you could see, the bottom one is Padlet, which, which we use Padlet to share information with our friends. We, we learned a lot of new places to find our research, like the TrueFlix, which I could understand helped a lot of people, along with Pebble Gold and Pebble Gold Next, which also helped. Newzella, Doggo News, and Time for Kids were that goo, not that good as the other ones. But my favorite was Google Earth. For example, Google Earth has the best things. You, for example, if, if I were to search up my house on TrueFlix, it wouldn't show anything. But if I were to show, search it up on Google Earth, it would still show, show something. Could we use, um, Kids, no, no. We use KidSafe searches for information and images like KidRacks, DuckDuckGo, and Google Safe Search, along with Kittle, which a lot of people liked. The fourth, the fourth step was to create. First, first we created 3D topographic maps. We had to draw, we had to draw a map. We measured a grid on a small print, printed map and a large paper. Then we drew our map, bu, box by box on the large paper. It was challenging to use our stick with our weak hand, but, I, I mean, and, and draw with our strong hand, but in the end, I, we were proud. Last, we picked one map to make our group 3D map. After, we made Salto to build our map. We worked in our, we worked in our continent group to, to build the map. Building tall mountains where there are mountains and flat plains where there are plains. I liked this part because we made it real and, because we made a real inaccurate map. Labeling and creating a map key is the last step to complete our 3D maps for social studies. The first step is, we have to, uh, label all the important places and information that we wanna highlight on our maps. For example, if you're in the Europe group, you're, you, you're gonna wanna highlight, um, the Eiffel Tower, Leaning Tower of Pisa, and all the fifty names, all the names of the fifty countries in Europe. The second thing you do is you make a map key that defines what the colors mean. For example, our group wanted to make it look real, so we did green for the plains of grass, brown for the mountains. Yeah, and then the third thing is, we make a direction key that says where north is, east is, south is, and west, where west is. We watched a video called Tour the World. So, like Lucas said, after we make our maps, we paint them. We use different colors to show different parts of the map. We also put a map key to show where each color stands for. And this is example of South America.
The blue is the water.
Whoa, turn, show the audience that, oh, man. Look at that. That is not just a pizza box.
That's better than pizza.
Wow, that's beautiful.
That's really...
Black is pink and red is desert. Um, this is North America's map.
Europe.
Um, this is... We have forests, yellow is plains.
Whoa.
Brown is mountains, red is hills, and...
Walk that down this way so everyone can see it and then show it to the front of the audience. Perfect.
That's fantastic.
I did not do that when I was in elementary school, that is great. I saw that on the presentation.
Who got the pizza?
That is like C and R.
In addition to our 3D maps, we also made with shores. We made those, made these so if people want to visit a place you're researching about, Tremise, Argentina, they know where they go when they get there.
Oh, this is great. I've been trying to figure out where I'm going next, so. Definitely pay attention here.
It's not all fish. This is Fiji and the names of...
Fiji, I'll take that one.
This is the one I made. I made all the...
Can they book flights? Perfect.
Can we use that for our next application?
Beautiful. Great, you're doing great. Go on. Yes.
After you make it, you think about what you wanna put in it. Instead of doing text and text and more text and more text repeatedly, then a picture. You wanna have a picture and then some text.
That's right.
Picture and some text repeatedly. I also put a challenge in there just to make it fun for the readers. So if you look on one of my pages in Argentina, then you'll see there's a challenge. It's not that good, but what's next? What's next is, oh, what's next?
We've done 3D maps, we've done travel with shores, but... Well, some kids aren't finished, but what's next? What's next is our posters. We are working on these now. The posters, like a brochure, but on a giant piece of paper so we can give even more information. We will also be making commercials. I don't know much about that yet, but when we found out, our whole class was curious.
After all these, we'll all return to our adventure, which is super exciting. Thank you all for doing this presentation. And please throw a round of applause to Ms. Garrus, Ms. Moss, and Mrs. O'Leary, Mrs. James, and our fellow students.
So, that was great. So, uh, the Board of Education's going to ask you questions. So before you answer your question, can you say your first name so they can address you by your first name? And I will just start by saying, that was amazing. And, gosh, I'm so impressed with the work that you've done, um, with your teachers, so. Go ahead.
Can you introduce yourselves by your first name, please? You can start.
Sydney. Lucas.
Luke.
Arav or what, or, um, or Av.
Okay.
Roma.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, did you wanna start since you didn't? Whose idea was it to use the pizza boxes?
I'm trying to remember back in third grade, I couldn't have done it.
Um, so Ms. Garrus and Ms. Lester were, um, thinking about what they wanted to do for a project and they decided to do, um, a map. So, like Arav said, we got to pick our continent, but they were thinking, how do we get these in something? What do we do? So they're thinking, well, if it's square, then a pizza box is square, right? If it's gonna be 3D and, um, then you wanna make it higher.
Right, you have the height and the backdrop. It was perfect.
Yeah, you have more room. And then there's enough room for you guys to write in it, put your map in it. So what we did was we made the map and then we glued it into the pizza box. And then we got informations and pictures and we glued it onto the top of the map. And then we painted and everything and then we like, just, you know, it's it.
Have any, have any of you visited the places you made the maps about? You have, can you tell us about it?
London.
Go ahead.
Well, I've been to Italy when I was very little.
I have been to Paris and London when I was a baby.
I have been to Germany, France, and Switzerland.
Um, I've not been to South America, but I've went like very close, like five or some, like five to twenty miles away on Tanya Island.
Okay, wow. So I, I just wanna ask you guys if you feel prepared to start a business because you had great marketing ideas, you figured out the picture and text ratio, and you really made me wanna go to these places. So, I think you guys could, could really start a business if you put your minds to it. I wonder, I wonder if you feel that way, too?
I, I feel that way, but I was, I, maybe we could do like, um, like one for like each group, include, like, the Europe group in my class and the Europe group in Ms. Lester's class.
It's perfect, perfect. More collaboration, we like that.
Well, thank you very much for sharing your work with us.
I just, uh, wanted... I just wanted to say thank you, um, to Doreen for organizing this tonight for our Board of Education and to just acknowledge the interdisciplinary work that's happening at Roeranbrook. It's just so impressive and I wanna thank our faculty and our students and their parents for allowing them to come tonight and share, share with us the good work that's happening in your building every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, we'll take a two-minute break while we reorganize here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If you guys wanna see the boxes, you can come here and we'll hold them up.
Okay, so...
So we're gonna resume now.
Um, at this time, I'd like to introduce Heidi McCarthy, our Director of Special Education. And as our community knows, we engaged in a tri-state consortium visit where we had multiple questions that we asked a team of educators in schools that are like ours to come in and give us some feedback on different aspects of our special education program. So tonight is the night where we're gonna present pieces of that report to the Board of Education and to the community. And there's also a written document that we'll place on our website tomorrow along with this presentation. So anyone can view it, if you'd like to see, uh, the recommendations and also the accolades that were shared with us about our, our program in this district. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. McCarthy. Thank you.
So, before you start, um, you're gonna have a tough time. That was great before, you, Dog and Pony Show, you have like the pizza boxes and...
There is no way that I could possibly come close to that. I will not be as engaging, articulate as our students were, so...
The students are great.
They set a really high bar for me to follow, but that was wonderful. That was just the energy in this room was amazing, so.
Thank you.
So I'm pleased tonight to share with you, um, part of the report of the Tri-State Consortium Consultancy, which was held in December. A bit about the consortium, for those who may not be aware, it was founded in nineteen ninety-two. Um, and it is a consortium of school districts, um, other districts in the three states, high-performing school districts. Um, and there is an assessment model that they utilize to help respond to essential questions developed by the district that's being visited. And then, um, as they go through the process, which I will explain in greater detail, at the end, they provide an assessment report for districts to use to help them in prioritizing their further actions. So, uh, I'll speak a bit about the planning process. Um, and for me, it actually, although I knew that we were having the visit, for me, it actually started in May of two thousand and eighteen when I myself participated as a co-leader in a visit.
in a visit in Southampton. And their visit was also around special education. So it was a nice visit for me to be on. And from that moment in May until the end of our visit in December, everything that I saw in a classroom, every conversation that I had, every piece of data that I looked at, I was wondering and thinking, is this something that we should be using to plan for the visit? Our district is so unique in how we educate students with disabilities and our belief and in inclusion that I struggled with how do we tell our story? And how do we tell a story to others coming into our district who don't share a similar story to us? So I started by forming a steering committee made up of colleagues that I'll show you in a next slide. And through that steering committee, we worked together to develop our essential questions. We started collecting evidence and identifying pieces of evidence to collect. We had broken up into groups. And so some of the people on the steering committee helped identify people or classrooms to be observed in interviews. And then there were, it came down to logistics as well. What hotel would they stay in? What about security? What about parking? I mean, it was, it was, there were numerous things to think about. And the committee really helped to get everything established for us. So here are members of the steering committee, some who are here with me tonight. So I'd like to personally acknowledge Kristy Evers and Liz Wright, who are the CSC Chairpeople, who helped immensely. Amy Kaiser is here, or was here. Amy is here. Amy was amazingly helpful. And Adam, anything that looks professional and pretty is thanks to Adam. His way around Google and creating different forms and the dashboard that we utilize, that was all through the help of Adam. And what I appreciated the most about that is Adam didn't just do it for me. He taught me how to do it. So it was a great learning experience for me as well. So here were the essential questions that we determined that we wanted to have the tri-states visitors form their, all their observations, all their review of data around. So we were looking at our inclusive approach to special education and wanted to know to what extent was having a positive impact on academics and social experiences for all of our students? To what extent did our general education teachers and special education teachers share the responsibility for the academic instruction and social integration for our students with disabilities? Then we wanted to look at how well are we preparing our teachers to do that hard work? So to what extent are our staff members prepared and supported to work with students at varying levels? And then we also wanted to look at the building-based services and supports that we were providing for some of our struggling learners, meaning not necessarily our students who had already been identified as students with a disability, but those who might be struggling academically and what kind of supports did we have in place to support those students? So I'll speak briefly about the visit itself. I'm going to share with you some information about our visitors, the schedule that we developed. And then, of course, the meat of this presentation tonight is really an overview of their findings and some of their recommendations. So here's a picture of our visitors. We had 24 visitors come for the visit, which was a very large number for tri-states visits. This particular consultancy drew a lot of interest from our component districts. It was actually a waiting list. They felt that the 24 number was about all that they could handle in the visit. But it was great for us because we had them in all six buildings and at the education center. So their headquarters, if you will, was in the Upper Commons of Seven Bridges, which is a wonderful space and demonstrated for them some of our use of space. They had the breakout rooms and an opportunity to do a lot of their work there. I have listed for you here the districts that were represented and the type of positions that were represented, from superintendents to principals, assistant principals, teachers, instructional leaders, et cetera. And districts in New York, all the way up to near Syracuse, out onto Long Island, and then districts in Connecticut. So we developed a very complex and detailed schedule that incorporated classroom visits, group interviews of teachers, students, administrators, the superintendent and her cabinet, special education leadership team, the staff development team, parents, and members of the Board of Education. And so this is an overview of the work that they did. So the first day they came in, and after they had a delicious breakfast, I'd like to acknowledge and thank once again our food service personnel for the incredible meals that they prepared. There was a big talk with the group about how good the food was. Overall, they talked so highly about everything in the visit. It was really a very uplifting three days. But so the first day they came in, they reviewed the evidence that we had provided to them electronically. They started to plan out who was going to go where. And then by the afternoon, they were in our schools. Thursday, they were in our schools in the morning, came back for lunch in our schools in the afternoon, in classrooms, meeting with teachers, meeting with parents. And then on Friday, in the beginning of the day, they met together as a group and really tried to compile all the information together to help them help us look at our essential questions. Heard just a few pictures of the visitors in our classrooms. They went into the classrooms and sat down at the tables with the students and spoke to the students and spoke with the teachers and came back with the biggest smiles on their faces. They all just loved the atmosphere in the schools and were really impressed by the learning. So a brief overview of the findings. So in general, they felt that our general theory of action was that by creating inclusive schools, all of our students have a sense of belonging. By creating inclusive classrooms, we're elevating the quality of teaching. And that instructional practices that address diverse learning needs raise the performance level of all students. So some of the notable findings are here. They felt that we had a very positive school climate, which was reflecting a core belief in inclusion. Our commitment to inclusion led to many strong programs and processes. That we had taken proactive steps to really look at the social-emotional learning of our students and to address school climate in our training and beginning of the implementation of the Ruler Program. That our school communities all valued the general education, special education collaboration. That we had a robust, well-defined program of professional development and that all of our schools have tiered intervention programs. And in sum, the team concluded that Chappaqua Central School District's emphasis on inclusion benefits both classified and regular education students. So some of their recommendations for consideration, they noted that across the buildings, we weren't all speaking the same language when talking about the same thing. So they're recommending that we develop a shared language, specifically a shared definition of inclusion, what really is inclusion, and a shared definition of what do we mean by student success, so that we're clearly defining what we're doing, what the outcomes are, and how we're defining the service models at each of the schools because there were some inconsistencies in what, how people were referring to what they were doing. Clarifying the related roles and expectations of teachers and service providers so that there's consistency across all of the buildings. To provide additional professional learning opportunities about inclusionary practices. In thinking about this one, you know, we've always embedded inclusion within whatever that we're doing with our professional learning. But they perceive that as inclusion not currently being perceived as a specific topic. So perhaps giving more emphasis on inclusion as a topic. So again, something for us to consider. And to develop a comprehensive assessment plan that provides qualitative and formative information about the progress toward the vision, including the impact of inclusion. And this is all in an effort to align this work to the strategic plan and to have some more consistency amongst the language, which I believe the strategic planning process in itself really helped us to start to gel that more. Another suggestion that they made was in looking at our teacher evaluation tool, to look at collaboration as part of the evaluation of our teachers. I've had the opportunity over the past several years to do observations along with principals and observing the teacher teams. And I found that to be really effective because then you can have conversations about the process and the teachers working together rather than having them separately. So they had suggested and looking at that as well. And then they pointed out that social inclusion does continue to be a concern or an issue in the district in some groups and to look at that a bit more, which we certainly are doing a lot of work around that, especially through the SEL fellowship that Christine started this year. So for next steps, looking to leverage student voice more. There was a combination, a conversation in that consultancy at the end about, you know, how do we even measure success of an inclusive program? And so one of the things that they had suggested was to get more student voice into that so that we can understand better what students are saying about their experiences, being educated in an inclusive environment. Speaking back to the professional development, we've already started to plan for additional professional development. We have three days, I think, over the summer where we're opening it up to any teacher, any service provider who wants to increase their learning about working collaboratively in the different models and what one could use in teaching students of differing learning styles and needs. And then to do an analysis of the different assessment tools that we're using to support not only our screening process but to support our IEP program development. So I know I ran through that really quickly. But in closing, I just want to say that one of the moments that I found was at the end, when the team was wrapping up and moving out, somebody had said to me, what you are doing here in Chappaqua is nothing short of amazing. And in the report, I make quotes, one of the members is saying, the visitors is saying, it would take my district years to get to where Chappaqua is today. So one of my hopes in this visit was not only that we were going to learn from the visitors, but the visitors were going to learn from us and take that back. There have been many requests for copies of some of the documents that we have and information that we have. When we shut down the dashboard, we had it open on Google. And when we shut it down, we got requests, can't you keep that open a little bit longer? Because the visitors wanted to learn from us. So I'd like to think that as a result of this visit, not only are our students benefiting because it's been a lens from the outside looking in that's helped us to answer some of our questions, but I'd like to believe that students in their districts are also going to benefit as well because they brought some of what we're doing back to their districts. And hopefully, change will be made in their districts as well. So that was it in a nutshell. Like Christine said, this will be up on the website starting tomorrow. And so any parents that want to read it in its entirety, it's there. And I welcome any questions.
Yep, I'll start. Well, thank you for inviting us. This is the second time I got to participate in that, like, double circle at the end. And it's very, it was very informative. It was great to hear the feedback that we got from them and hear our self-reflection. And thank you to the administration and the faculty because it takes a lot of time out of your day if this doesn't happen overnight. And we spend a lot of energy, time, and money on professional development. But the way I see it, this is almost like a self-reflection. Where we're not, we're learning, but we're also having other people take a look at what we're doing and give us feedback. I guess the only question I have is, do we have a timeframe when we're going to try and implement these suggestions?
The visit team will come back in two years to do another visit to kind of see where we are and what we've done with the information. We just got the report not that long ago. And we're still, you know, kind of going through it and identifying priorities. I would like to think by the time they come back in two years, we've certainly made progress toward many of those things that they had suggested. We also want to add to what you said, Warren, and I neglected to do that, that our teachers opened up their classrooms. Our teachers and faculty members and administrators spoke freely and honestly with the visiting team, that they felt that they got a true picture and indication of how people felt here. And that was important to us from the beginning. And we shared with everybody, we want you to be honest. You know, I felt like it was the Wizard of Oz when we were pulling the curtain back, like, let's just show them who we are. Because if we're going to try to put on a show or pretend or say the things that we think they want us to say, it's not a good use of anybody's time. So they were really impressed with how open and honest our teachers and faculty members were. We had parents that were interviewed that gave input into the process, too. So great thanks to everybody who participated in the visit because it resulted in some good, strong suggestions for us.
Warren, may I, in terms of next steps, before the end of the school year, we'll report on our progress on our assessment tool. Adam has a team that's working on that immediately because that would be something that we would not only be considering for our specialized students but our generalized students as well. I'm working with a group to try to figure out how do we leverage student voice in our decisions, particularly around social-emotional learning. But part of the discussion centered on, you know, you can look at academic data of students who are in the inclusion program, but what is the impact on the generalized students of being involved in inclusion as well? So trying to grapple with how to measure that is something that we're looking at. And then in terms of professional development, when we present to you our summer program and then our targets for next year, you'll see that embedded in our discussion, so.
What do you call a mindset?
Yes.
I just want to say what a great experience it was, I think, as a board member to be able to sit down with the members of the consortium because we were able to talk freely about how we felt things function in the district. But it was also very interesting to have outsiders come in and clearly be so impressed with the way that we do function now. So they're making suggestions. But it's adding, you know, small pieces to something that's in very good shape as it is. So it's good to get that confirmation from outside the district. So I think that was really wonderful for all of us to hear as well. And also just to see how well the district just, like, embraced them coming in, wanting to hear how we could make any improvements, big or small. And it was great for us. You know, it was really educational for us to be a part of it, too. So thank you.
Yeah, it was really validating. It was great.
Thank you. I know that it was a lot of work through the planning. And I know that there's still a lot of work to be done. And I look forward to hearing, you know, what the specific actions you guys take in the future will be. I had one question, the steering committee. That was formed just for the planning purposes? Or is that committee staying intact through some of the improvement planning?
Do you need to add a question?
That is a great question, Holly, and actually a great idea that I didn't think of because when we finished, I said thank you to the steering committee. But maybe that is a group that... What do you think, Amy?
Right. Sorry, didn't mean to throw that. That's a good one.
Yes. And then I can pull on them in two years to help me pull this together again. So it's a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just know how hard you worked in preparation. As I told you beforehand, don't worry. We're going to come signing through. And it looks like we did. And I want to thank you and the entire staff for the great work you did.
Well, you know, I just want to echo what everyone has said and thank you for such hard work. This was my second time participating as a board member in the tri-states. And it's always such an impressive process. And it is very validating. So I want to congratulate you and your department for opening yourselves up.
So I want to congratulate you and your department for opening yourselves up, and it's great to get the results that we got. I have some questions about next steps. I have three issues that I wanted to bring up. One issue that I know is very important to people in the community is the issue of social integration of students, especially at the high school. It's easier, for some reason, at the elementary and middle school level, but as you go up in grade level, it gets harder and harder for students to feel socially integrated. So I think that's one of our challenges, and so I, you know, I would like to see that put in the next steps. You know, I'm not, I don't, I need some clarification about this category of next steps and also the category of recommendations for consideration because I'm trying to figure out what's getting prioritized. But I think, I just want to get through on, so I think that social integration of students, especially at the high schools, is very important. And I think also what they, I'm not sure if they touched on this at all, but the issue of transitions for special ed students, transitions probably especially to the high school and also after high school to college, I think is something that I've heard identified as a challenge. And the third point is the last bullet in the next steps. So it's really a question. I mean, it says, "Analysis of assessment tools to support IEP program development and screening process." Now, I would think that assessment, the analysis of different assessment tools would be broader than just assessing IEP programs and the screening process. So I would think it would be an assessment of those things that they recommended for consideration. You know, you might have long-term, assessment of long-term goals and assessment of short-term goals. So, you know, one thing I know, I took a look at their report. It's not that lengthy, but I know that they discussed an assessment plan that is aligned with the skills and attributes that the district values, and they talked about a broader way to measure academic learning that would capture cognitive skills and personal attributes articulated in the strategic coherence plan such as critical thinking, problem-solving, perseverance, self-direction, et cetera. So an overall plan to assess these outcomes and expand existing performance-based assessment. So when you talk about analysis of different assessment tools in the third bullet, I would think that those assessment tools would apply to a much greater category than what you have here.
Yeah. This is actually, and I probably should have put it in the header, this is actually like our immediate next steps, right? So these are the things that we've already started to put into action now, but certainly many of the things that you discussed are things that we will be working toward within, you know, the next year or two, depending on how broad or how narrow. But yes, absolutely, looking at the skills and attributes that were identified throughout the strategic plan and looking at ways to measure that was one of the recommendations. The transition did not come up in their report. It was not in their report.
Yeah, I didn't see it at all, but I'm bringing it up because it's something that's been brought up in our district.
Yeah.
But not part of the Tri-State's report.
Right. They didn't find it as an issue. That doesn't mean that it's not something that we're looking at, but they didn't find it as an issue that they felt that we needed to address, but we are continuing to look at that and work through that, absolutely.
Right. Okay.
So I guess I would share in terms of a timeframe, we have two years to address the areas that they have identified that we should focus on. In terms of what we have shared with you as our next steps, say our immediate steps where we plan to have something in place to share with you before the end of the year, right? So we can't tackle everything at once, but we're taking pieces of this one step at a time, and the pieces that we're looking at with immediacy also connect to our strategic plan.
Right. Maybe it would be good to have a sort of a calendar with all of the goals mapped out in a sort of timeframe, just so that we don't get a feeling that things are going to get lost. You know, with time, we tackle so many problems, and we'll have many other presentations getting to budget season, and it'll be graduation, it'll be the summer. And so I just want to get a sense of nailing things down, you know, in the immediate, immediate future while we're thinking about it.
And I think that that is an important thought, and I think that's also why in the model that Tri-State offers is that they come back and do a revisit to assess how we've done in terms of addressing their recommendations. So.
Yeah, I thought reading the report, their recommendations were very clear and well-defined, like in terms of the universal language. They did talk about that social piece, especially at the high school level, so I was very happy to see all of that in there because then I feel that we really are going to address it because they are going to circle back with us on that. So I know, you know, I liked the way that they did lay that out in the report. I found it helpful.
Are there any recommendations that we reject?
I didn't see anything that I would.
So, yeah, you know, within their process, they talk about recommendations for considerations. So they're not an organization that comes in and says, "You have to do this." It's, you know, it wasn't an audit or a compliance thing like that. But in reading it, there wasn't anything that I felt was off in any way. If anything, there were a couple of statements that they made that I thought, oh, if we, maybe we didn't show the right evidence to show that we do that. Right? So if there were things that they were saying were missing, it might have been because we didn't give them the opportunity to see that we do that, but I thought that this was all valid and helpful.
Also, as part of the process, we made it very clear at the outset what we believe in, so I don't think they would have recommended anything that would be contrary to our belief of inclusion being a civil rights issue for our students. So I think all their recommendations fell in line with that philosophy.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Heidi, can you stay for a few questions afterwards?
Sure, during the question and answer.
For the public comment.
For the public comment, just so you can hear the comment. Thank you.
Okay, so I just have a few more items to share with the board tonight. So first, our draft calendar is on the website for 2019, 2020. So this is the feedback window, and at our next meeting, I'll recommend the calendar for you to adopt for next school year. So I would encourage if anyone has any comments they'd like the board to consider, they can email the Board of Education directly, they can email me, but this is the draft calendar, and I'd like to thank Lisa for helping construct this. I think it's a pretty solid calendar, but again, we will consider any feedback prior to the adoption at the next meeting. I'd like to again thank Roaring Brook, Adam and Heidi for preparing the Tri-State's presentation, and Andrew for coming tonight. And I thought what we saw shared was so important, particularly starting with our high school students who really achieved the absolute highest honor you can have in terms of science research in our country, to be able to share with our younger students what science means to them. I think that was really important, and I think speaks volumes about what we value here in this district. So it was such a great coincidence that it all lined up tonight. But I do want to thank our administrative team for facilitating the presentations at the beginning of our meeting today. We had an excellent administrative retreat right before our board meeting that some of our board members were able to participate in, where we engaged in a professional development session around Reader's Workshop. And I'd like to thank our Director of Literacy, Jamie Elman, for facilitating this for us this afternoon. I just wanted to circle back, we have our opening ceremony set now for the new athletic facility for 3:00 PM on Wednesday, February 27th. All of our important contributors will be able to make it, so I'm hoping that our board members can attend as well. Tomorrow night, we welcome our eighth grade parents to Greeley as we begin our orientation process for our freshmen, if you can believe it. So we're excited to welcome all of our first-time high school families to Greeley for their first opportunity to learn about our program here at our high school. And finally, yesterday, John, Joe, and Jason met regarding the facility use practices with our sports team liaisons to schedule the spring semester. So we'll continue to monitor and evaluate our new process and update the Board of Education as appropriate throughout the spring. So.
I have a question regarding the calendar.
Sure.
Are we okay with dates and holidays and religious holidays, especially with the spring recess?
Yes, so I spoke with all of my colleagues across the regions, past region, Hudson region we work with. So everyone is following the same calendar as us as to when spring break would be scheduled, and that's largely due to the assessment period for our 3-3 testing schedule that's given to us by state ed.
And with religious holidays also?
What are you asking?
For spring break, for spring recess. We, I know a couple of years ago, we had an issue where we had, we were open in school when we should have been closed.
So Passover straddles both the week that we're off and the week after, so we don't have any conflict with holidays in terms of our calendar for our employees.
Okay.
Except for our snow days.
Right.
If we don't. There's no other place to take out.
Just because, you know, about two years ago, we had an issue where we had a problem with Passover and Easter.
One of the things I tried to do this year and last year is I built some, an extra day in May that we could start to pull off if we needed to.
Around Memorial Day.
Yeah. So I did the same in this calendar, and then, you know, I, last year, I didn't get any feedback about the calendar, but I've gotten many questions about that holiday break between December and January. So I'm assuming the question was, will there be two weeks? And right now, we have two weeks, so I'm assuming that's probably going to be welcomed and will likely stay.
Okay.
Some people don't like that, so you're going to get both sides, but there's no other way to do it.
I can extend the May, I can extend Memorial Day, but I don't think that that would make sense.
Then you have testing coming up right there. All right. Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. And I'd like to thank Lisa for helping me.
Thank you. Committee reports. We'll come back to facilities, so I know you guys have a report. Communications?
No, we don't have anything.
No, not today.
No, no.
We're in process for things, but nothing to report.
And policy, we're going to meet probably again next week or so.
We'll have a meeting either next, probably next week.
Yep, we have some work to do there. Facilities.
We have a report. Hold on, and I'm going to have this back here. Oops. Well, two things, we had a facilities committee meeting on a Thursday. The primary discussion at the meeting was on the updating of the bond work at that meeting. I mean, the Reader's Digest version is, everything's going very well. We are, the steam center, a couple of small issues in walls and stuff, but everything's going well. It's ahead of schedule. Subsequently, we've had a little bit of information about the middle school steam centers that we're going to find out more about that may cause a little disruption, but we don't think it'll be a big disruption if anything, and we'll find out more about it this week. I think there's a meeting tomorrow. There were some questions, we had a, the board had had some questions, and now I'm going to find John's email. Hold on a second. You have it? Okay. We discussed the leaks at Seven Bridges at the last meeting, and the board, the facilities committee had asked for a sort of a written summary of the issues regarding those leaks. And Joe Riley from KGND, who was at the meeting on a Thursday, the facilities committee meeting graciously, or graciously, agreed to, it's his job, agreed to give us an update. And I'm not going to read the entire thing because you'd fall asleep, but in short, they gave us explanations for the roof and why it was leaking. It's generally this copper roof, there's some, the way there was a repair made a couple of years ago, the way they repaired it was a soldering of this copper, which had the long-term effect of not allowing it to breathe or move and efficient changes in temperature and whatnot, which has caused cracking in the soldering, and that really was essentially a leak. They've addressed, they've come up with a plan and addressed it, was how to address the Yankee gutter issue, which is the same leak in the library. They've come up with also the leaks in the cafeteria and the computer classroom leaks, and the leaks in the girls' and boys' locker room and the gym wall, all centered around things that are fixable and have been addressed, and we're going to start addressing.
I think one of the most important things is that why these things happen is really the building is settling.
Yeah.
And that was the reason.
There's actually, they did a little review of whether or not, because they didn't want to fix something that's going to have the same issue as the building completely settled. We're, you know, and they're pretty confident that it has after 15 years now. And so the fixes that they've recommended, we believe will address the issues. And I think I sent you all the report. If you want more details, we could probably get it. That was really it.
And then we have a public hearing February 5th with Zador property.
And we do believe, and we don't have certainty, but we do believe that there will be a vote by the planning board afterward, is the rumor we hear. Also, this Thursday, tomorrow night, if this gets published in time, there's a meeting of the residents around Greeley, who had some questions about the construction and about various noise issues around Greeley. We're having a meeting, the administration and the facilities committee is meeting with the parents, I mean, not the parents, the residents, and maybe parents, but residents around here at 6:00 PM. And then at 7:00 PM, we have a meeting at Seven Bridges with the residents who are but or near the Zador property. Hopefully, we can answer any questions and concerns they have before the public meeting on February 5th so that we're fully prepared on February 5th. Okay, the next meeting of the facilities committee will be March 14th at 5:00 PM. New time, for those of you who come normally to the meeting at 5:30 or 5:45, we are moving it up to 5:00 PM. Do you know so?
I don't think so.
Schools, we also, at the meeting, we got an update on the school safety, things are waiting for SED for the two buildings, but that's going to proceed. That is all.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, we'll take a, have a public comment period, so in respect for each other's time, we ask you to keep your comments three minutes, and board members can be reached by phone or email, and after the comment period, the board may discuss amongst themselves things that have been commented on. So if anyone would like to take the microphone?
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you very much. Approvals and ratifications, may I get a motion to approve for three-point move?
Three-point one, to approve the minutes of the January 9th board meeting.
I move three-point one.
A second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Any of you accepting or not approving?
Accepting minutes, okay. Want some approval, accept the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I recommend four-point one instructional as presented.
I move we accept the superintendent's recommendation of that four-point one as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I recommend four-point two non-instructional as presented.
I'll move that as well. I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for four-point two as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Five-point one, CSC summaries as reported to board on January 23rd, 2019. I will move five-point one.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-point two, whereas, this is regarding libraries, whereas libraries in three elementary schools have been renovated and shelving associated with component shelving manufactured by Biblo Model have been installed in all the schools, and whereas the renovation of the wedding, a weeding, not wedding, of old books and redesigned furniture in elementary school libraries, there's surplus of Biblo Model shelving that can be used in the renovation of the library of the high school, and whereas in order to utilize the shelving from the elementary schools, for the high school, library, additional shelving, and other associated components manufactured by Biblo Model must be utilized, and whereas is necessary and appropriate to standardize the purchase of such shelving for the high school library, shelving and associated components manufactured by Biblo Model. Therefore, be resolved that pursuant to the authority conferred by Section 103- Therefore, be resolved that pursuant to the authority conferred by section 103.5 of the general municipal law, the Board of Education hereby determines that is in best interest of the district for the reasons of economy and efficiency, including financial savings, to the school district estimated at between $10,000 and $15,000 to standardize, standardize the school district shelving and associated components for the Horace Greeley High School library by requiring the purchase of such products manufactured by Biblo Model and be further resolved that the purchasing agent for the school district is authorized to contract for and purchase additional shelving as the school district may require for the high school library manufactured only by Biblo Model and be authorized to purchase such equipment from the lowest responsible bidder after advertisement for sealed bids in the manner provided by section 103 of general municipal law and any other processes, process permissible under such law, including but not limited to state contract through a BOSI's COSER, federal, state, or local, or county contracts by piggybacking onto each other's state bid RFP so long as is determined that each other's state bid RFP substantially complies with provisions of section 103 of the general municipal law. Do I have a motion for five point two?
All right, what's the move?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So I, I just wanted to be sure that I understand what's going on. So there's surplus shelving from the high school.
No, from the elementary school.
No, there's surplus shelving from the elementary schools, which is very specific. It's Biblo Model shelving. And so we want to use the surplus shelving at the high school, but, but in order to use it, we have to spend somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000. No? Okay. This is what I want to understand.
What really happened is that we already finished three elementary schools.
Oh, no, sorry, there would be, would be a savings.
Because we have leftover shelving that is worth $10,000 to $15,000. And when we purchased the original shelving, this company was on the state contract and it is no longer on the state contract. So what we're trying to do is that in order for us to use the leftover materials, because we want to use them at the high school, we're trying to standardize it. And then, and then we'll go through the regular process to purchase.
And they wouldn't take any leftovers back? They wouldn't credit us for any leftovers?
No, we can return. But, so what we're doing is that the leftover will be moved at the high school to be used.
Repurposed and standardized, so we have to, yes.
Otherwise, it would look different.
Right.
This is after we did the weeding.
Weeding of the books, so we have extra shelves, yes.
At the wedding.
Okay.
No, it says weeding.
I know, I said wedding initially.
Oh, okay.
The wedding of the books.
So did we both?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five point three, I recommend, I move that we accept the gift from $500 from Mobile ExxonMobil, courtesy of Millwood Auto Center, to Douglas Grafflin Elementary School to be used to purchase additional supplies for the new Maker Space. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any conversation?
I just want to say thank you to ExxonMobil. They make this gift every year and it's very much appreciated.
It's actually the new owner of the ExxonMobil there, but he didn't continue the process.
Oh, okay. Well, they're still making the gift. That's.
How are we?
Sorry, generous.
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't realize this was something that had been going on for quite a while, but the, the fit of Millwood and Grafflin sounded a little off to me since West Orchard is the school that is for most of the Millwood area. So I was just curious how that relationship came to be and did the other schools have a similar relationship?
I don't know.
So it's not.
What's happened in the past has been the ExxonMobil on the corner across from the fire station has donated $500 to Grafflin and the one in Millwood has donated $500 to West Orchard. Another one in Millwood was sold. Muhrenberg has always been left out because they don't have an ExxonMobil.
But now the one in Millwood is giving to Grafflin?
I guess, I don't know. I don't know. We got to ask them. That's unusual, honestly.
I, listen, they, so I would just share with you, they choose who they're going to donate to and we accept it.
Right. Maybe they just have a connection to students there.
So I know that I spoke with Jim and he had shared with me that they were also anticipating a donation, but that process hasn't happened fully yet. That's why it's not on the board agenda.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Either way, it's $500, I'll take it.
Thank you, ExxonMobil. All in favor?
Aye.
Number four is very long.
You can summarize it.
Let me summarize it.
Everybody read it sound anymore, we need them to learn.
So number four is a motion for various educational municipal corporations within New York State to jointly bid for supply items. So basically, we're going to, we can bid with Eastern Suffolk BOSI's, that seems to be the big one. A participant meeting will be annually held from each representative, program participant, notice meeting in five days and advisory committee. So it's basically allowing us to.
More competitive pricing, yes.
John, did I miss anything there?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Do I have a motion for five point four?
I'll move five point four.
Second for five point four?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I, I think it's good to have these money-saving opportunities and also we're not bound by it, so it's optional. That's, and that's an important point in that, that arrangement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five point five, whereas district owns attached list of items no longer useful and necessary for school purposes or are no value to the school district, therefore be resolved, the board hereby declares such items to be surplus property and have no value to the school district and authorizes disposal of such equipment in prudent manner with accordance to law. I have a motion for five point five.
I move five point five.
Do I have a second for five point five?
A second.
Any discussion?
Auctions International.com, where you can buy the stuff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item five point six, be resolved, the Board of Education approves bid award recommendation V2019-1, furniture for Horace Greeley High School and West Orchard Elementary School libraries, recommended award to creative library concepts in the amount of $28,675.34. I will move five point six.
A second, five point six.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five point seven, be resolved, the Board of Education approves Chapco School Foundation Instagram gift for the global international water quality program in the amount of $1,833.45 submitted by Horace Greeley High School teacher Carol Giuliani.
I will move five point seven.
Do I have a second for five point seven?
A second.
Any discussion? Thank you, CSF, as always. All in favor?
Aye.
Item five point eight, be resolved, the Board of Education President is hereby authorized, along with superintendent of schools, to sign the certification, certification form for the submission of 2018, 2019 school year undue burden independent evaluator hardship waiver application for its section 3012 there's DAPPR plan, the State Education Department. A copy of said application shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. I will move five point eight.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We should get one of these hardship waivers for all of those.
All in favor?
So I, I just want to say, speaking of APPR, I think that today both houses of the legislature voted to decouple teacher evaluations from the high state, state tests. I know that the Senate approved it this afternoon and I think the Assembly did later, but I'm not, I'm not quite sure, but I think that happened. So.
So at some point in the near future, when they give us clarity on what that means for us, we'll share it with the Board of Education.
Right, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five point nine, be resolved, the Board of Education approves the independent evaluation agreement with development, amendment of assessment and intervention center for an independent, comprehensive psychoeducational and neuropsychal education, psycho, neuropsychal educational evaluation and participation in CSC meeting for student number 7018585. Amount not to exceed $400, $480 and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion for five point nine?
I'll move.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five point one oh, be resolved, the Board of Education approves a contract for paging, for Paging project in all six buildings with Select Telecom Incorporated, the amount of $389,672.10 and authorizes the board president to execute this contract. Do I have a motion for five point one oh?
Sure, I move five point one zero.
Do I have a second for five point one oh?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So maybe, yeah.
Question, like just in terms of, is this one of the security measures?
Okay, so this is the intercom.
Yeah.
System upgrade for all six buildings. And where we would, we would start would be Horace Greeley High School. We had mentioned that John and Joe were working on securing this for this meeting today. There was a huge process that had to happen because of the way that the original contractor was or was not on State Ed bid. So John and Joe expedited the process so that we were able to put the resolution on the agenda today. So John, did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Right, so what happened is that the original proposal, there were two proposals. One part was the, under state contract, which we can just purchase. And the other part was not on the state contract and therefore it created a problem because we really had to have one contractor to install all the PA systems.
Coordinated.
So what we did was that we sent a request to the state to request them to review those leftover items that were not in the state contract and to be considered as state contract. And they approved it.
That's great.
That's great. Just this morning.
And just for one year.
Okay.
So we were able to do it. And the problem we have is that for each school, we have some areas that is a dead zone. You just don't have, you don't hear it or you have volume issue. And also, we don't have outdoor PA announcements. So this will solve all the problems.
Oh, great.
And you will see that the one with the least amount is actually Seven Bridges because Seven Bridges already have the, most of the core. All the other schools, we have, they have to start from scratch.
Okay.
Is this a hard-wired system or?
I think hardware, wire system. And they will start, like what Christine said, they will start from Greeley and they expect to finish in two weeks.
Wow.
So, two weeks?
Two weeks. Wow.
I guess the question then is.
I got the over.
Wait, two weeks for, two weeks for all the buildings or just Greeley?
No, 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 just Greeley.
Oh, okay.
And then they'll go to the next building.
All right, well, that's still good timing.
Probably is another two weeks.
Yes.
But if you see the contract, they want 50% down first, so we have to issue the check first for Greeley and then they will start doing the Greeley and then we'll go each school.
So they want 50% for each school before they start? And I guess the question is, why do we, I, why does that have to be on tonight's agenda? We only got this this morning.
Because if there's a lockdown, there are locations in the building that can't hear it. So that's why I shared with you at the last meeting that we were targeting this agenda to get this addressed immediately.
For example, right now, I Lab doesn't have it. Because when we did the renovation, we really never installed the paging system. And then also in the gym.
Gym's a notoriously bad area.
I was told that you really can't hear.
Yeah.
They have broadcasts, but you can't really hear. And then outdoor, you definitely, right now, we don't have.
So is this the latest technology we can use?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we, can you page one school from the S N?
With this new technology, my understanding is yes. And so I just want to share with you, there have been times where we've needed this at Greeley and we didn't have it. For example, when we had the tornado warning, when Andrew needed to make an announcement to the student body after we had that, that threat, we needed to be able to address everybody at once and at least three times this year, we weren't able to do that. So that's why we expedited this as quickly as possible. So we really need to consider moving forward and beginning this work tomorrow, I think.
Full horns don't work.
Well, you know, clearly it's important, so we want to move it as, as fast as possible. So, I mean, we usually like to get things in advance except when there is a, a real reason to do things.
Yeah, the reality is that we really just got approval this morning.
And it's a good thing that we didn't wait till the next meeting, so.
I was just concerned because I see $400,000. That's a, that's a big chunk of mine.
We definitely have to ask the question, but we have, yeah, but it's, it's an important project.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Well, actually, I have one more question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
When, when are they going to be doing this work? During the days, after school?
After school, after school.
Okay.
When, when you expect them to start?
Safety protocols.
Probably next week because we probably won't issue the first check until next Tuesday.
Okay, so they start next week and be done two weeks after that?
Two weeks after that. So it's before the holiday, the, the break.
Okay, then we go from there. Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to take five point one one and five point one two together, be resolved, the board, basically, we're, we're appointing Ron Gama, Colleen O'Connor, and Lorin Stewart as title nine, title seven, and title six compliance officers of high school and that they're, all three will be doc coordinators in high school.
I will move five point one one and five point one two.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have, I guess, a, a motion to acknowledge?
Acknowledge the change orders. I acknowledge the six point.
Can we talk about this?
Changes. Six point, so can we get a motion to acknowledge six, one, two, three, four, and five?
I move, we acknowledge all of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Not on this, but I'd like to add one thing from the facilities report from before.
Well, let's, we don't have facilities anymore. Let's vote on this and we'll, we'll go back. All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, you said you needed, you looked at.
We also got a, we got a, an estimate for the white roof that we had talked about.
Oh, yes.
And the, it looks, one, relatively cost-effective, depending on their view, what $48,000 to do the roof would be, which is 48, 480.
Down four.
And, and, and we will forward this to, to everybody on the board. There's also a, it's been some, they gave us some reports about how this works and whatnot. And one of the highlights is that it's, in some cases, it's been noticed that a white roof with this material, and it's a, comes in buckets, but it's spread out, I guess, sort of like flex seal, I guess. That's my technical view. The, is it up to 70 degrees cooler on a, than on a tar roof, on the roof? So that will certainly translate into, I don't know, a couple of degrees, if not more inside.
Okay.
So, we're going to give it a shot.
So the facilities committee was, was study this and make a decision.
Okay.
Right, and then if that works, if we do that, if we approve it and we do that, certainly we'll look at the cost-effectiveness of doing it other places too.
And you want to mention about the garden roof?
Yeah, I had mentioned that at the last meeting.
Oh, the, why it's not feasible to put a garden on the roof?
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Which roof, though?
Bell.
Oh, bell, right.
We, we talked specifically about bell.
Yeah, there's some roofs that are not really laid out.
There were two reasons. One, one is that roof, probably the structure cannot support a garden. That's one. The second thing is that to be ADA compliant, it has to have an elevator to go up there.
Oh, okay, so that would apply to any roof in the district.
Well, if you're going to use it for students.
Right, right.
Because you're not going to build a garden and people cannot go up there, right? So if, if this garden is for students, then you have to have ADA compliant.
Right, and all kinds of safety measures, I suppose.
We have to start building guardrails and all sorts of things.
And irrigation and.
Yeah, too much.
Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion to accept Financial Claims Orders Report 7.1 and Treasure Report 7.2 together?
I will move 7.1 and 7.2.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, I, I just wanted to point out that I think this is the second time we've seen a note about items being reimbursed that were shipped to the home of, of the employee. So I just wanted to point that out, since I really need to make sure that that's not happening.
I just want to let you know that we have three more. And you see, the reality is that, and this is not an excuse. The reality is that when you order and you have an Amazon account...
It's like a default address.
You already have an account. So right now, we're really trying to ask the administrators to work with the teachers, and also just, just remind them that they really should not send it to home.
Does the school district have an Amazon account?
Uh, we don't.
I would think we would have a sales tax problem as well if they're using personal accounts to order things for the school, because the, it wouldn't be...
But we don't reimburse taxes.
Right, but they would be in...
They're going to get charged it.
Incented to...
But you can, I mean, I use Amazon, you can have multiple addresses.
You could do ship to.
They just had to remember.
There are also business accounts that you can make sure you have your nonprofit status, so... Just some things to think about to make sure that, one, we're not, they're not facing the sales tax and we're not having things shipped to people's homes.[1755.44]